Good afternoon, Chairman. I can confirm it is now four o'clock, the live stream has commenced and we are ready to start the meeting.
Thank you. Good afternoon and welcome to Development Control Meeting of the 31st of March 2021. I would like to advise that today we will be using Teams to provide a live stream to members of the public. Please, can we ask that you bear with us as we are dealing with numerous internet connections and sometimes this sometimes causes slow delay.
Thank you, Chairman. Before we go any further, could I ask all members to mute themselves please as there is some slight feedback on the line. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Chairman. Christina Webb will be your team's host for today and Chris Green will be the officer presenting during the meeting. Matt Seven is here to offer IT support if required and Christina Webb will be clerking the meeting today. During the meeting, all participants except for the chairman will be muted unless you remain during the whole of the meeting unless you have asked to speak. May I take this opportunity to remind members that all members are invited to participate in the meeting but would ask that you use the raise hand button or chat bar which can be found at the bottom of the participant screen should you wish to speak on any matter. The chairman will be notified of your request and he will then invite you to speak. Once you have been called to speak, please could we ask you to unmute yourself and then once again mute yourself after you have spoken. Anyone who has telephoned into the meeting will be invited to speak after all those that have raised their hands have spoken. When asking a question, please could we ask members to refer to page numbers with the theme report agenda for ease to officers. If we have to adjourn the meeting, the chairman will advise of this and the anticipated length of adjournment. When voting on an application, this will be undertaken by a roll call of those members present. Once your name is called, please unmute yourself and respond accordingly. When confirming the minutes and noting delegated and appeal decisions, unless any member raises an objection on these matters, these will be confirmed by assent. Members can only partake in voting on an application if they have been present for the entire discussion on that application. Thank you, Chairman. If we can now undertake a roll call of members present. councillor Anderson.
Present.
councillor Bird.
Present.
councillor Fairhead.
Present.
councillor Flaxman-Taylor.
Present.
councillor Freeman.
Present.
councillor Hammond.
Present.
councillor Lawne.
Present.
councillor Moggford.
Present.
councillor Myers.
Present.
councillor Wainwright.
Present.
councillor Williamson.
Present.
councillor B right.
Present.
and councillor T right.
Present.
Officers present, Caroline Watling, Monitoring Officer, Dean Minns, Planning Manager, Chris Green, Senior Planning Officer and Christina Webb, Executive Services Officer. Chairman, we can now start the agenda items.
Thank you, Christina. So yes, we move to open number one. Have we any apologies for absence, please?
No, Chairman, no apologies. We have a full committee today.
Thank you. Item number two, any declarations of interest, please?
Yes, Chairman, I'm Ward councillor for the first application on Crab Lane.
Thank you.
Any others? No.
Nothing in the chat bar, Chairman, and I can't see any hands raised.
Thank you. So we move to item number three. I'd just like to say just a couple of things about this application before we go further and get a view from the committee first. Regarding the amount of objections and how contentious this planning application is, I think the correct thing, obviously we'll have a vote, is that we have a site visit to look exactly where these proposed properties could be built, so we can take everything in and that will give us time just to take a step back and listen to the people because it's so contentious. I think, you know, we should just take our time and go and actually look exactly where this development is proposed. I don't know what your thoughts are, but that's what I would like to see happen.
Yeah, I second that.
Before we do that, could we have a look at the plans to see how they look before we go looking at the site?
I just didn't want to waste the time of the committee going through everything and then...
I appreciate that, but I just wonder if the office could show us the plans so that we have a view of what's going to be put there before we go for a site visit.
Chairman, the Moaning Officer would like to speak.
Okay, yes, Caroline.
Chair, we really need those items that are on the agenda before you this evening, they do need to be opened and you need to hear the officers' reports. They've come quite properly to the agenda today and you need to open the items. You can't decide without opening the items that they need to be deferred for a site visit. That's not appropriate. You need to hear from the officers and if after you've embarked on that process that members reach a conclusion that a site visit is called for, then you can make that decision then. But you do need to hear the officers' report before you can consider that.
Okay then, Caroline. Yeah, that's fair enough. I just didn't want them to go through it all and...
No, I do understand. Yeah.
Okay then, so...
Chairman, councillor Wainwright has his hand raised and councillor Tony Wright.
Yeah, if we just take those two and then we'll move to the report then.
Yeah, I mean, just a couple of things, Chairman. I mean, I would agree with what the deferment, but I mean, we have in the past deferred an application before we've heard all the plans, so it wouldn't be unique if we did that. Well, I had on my WhatsApp group from the Labour group, I've had one of my members who lives in Yarmouth North and she's saying to me, and I don't know if it's true, I had a call from Christina saying it's been pulled for public consultation, for public consultation. Carrie Talbot has just rang me saying she has had the email too. So this is the Great Northern Coast one, so are we going to be in the same situation with that? Because quite clearly Carrie Talbot, I believe, was going to speak on this, on the Northern Coast one and quite clearly she's been told that it's been pulled. So if that's the case, you know, I've got no objection to it being pulled, but I just want some clarification around that because if that is the case, then, you know, we could pull the Crab Lane one as well.
Okay, Caroline, could you just clarify on that, please?
Yeah, I want to allow Dean to respond on that. The situation of consultation.
It's different. Sorry, can you hear me now?
Yep.
Yeah. The situation for that particular application in, I think it's the Crab Lane one, is different, but I will leave it to Dean Minns, the Planning Manager, to explain what has happened on the withdrawn application.
Okay.
Hello there, it's Chris Green here, rather than Dean. Dean's just sitting next to me and asked me to explain. With regard to Great Northern Close, we had some revised drawings with us on the 24th of the 3rd and we put them out for reconsultation, but obviously to give people a reasonable reconsultation period, the end of that would be after the committee meeting and we were going to recommend that members approved or subject to there being no further material planning issues raised that hadn't been raised before, which is a rather complicated concept. And I think officers, other officers felt uncomfortable with that and indeed so too did the applicant and by mutual consent they felt that they would, that the applicant would like to see it deferred to. That's the Great Northern Close one.
Yeah. Okay, Chris, yeah, that's clarified that. Just take one more question. Who else had their hand up? Christina?
councillor Tony Wright.
Councillor Tony Wright.
Thanks, Chairman. Just a point in terms of what you suggested because of the number of objections. I think it would be a dangerous precedent if we decided to defer applications based on the number of people who had objected. I think whether it's one or a thousand, I think we should give them equal say and so I would certainly concur with the fact that what Caroline has said, that perhaps these have got to go ahead and clearly now we're here on the Great Northern Close, there's some controversy over that one as well.
That's slightly different.
I know it's slightly different, but what I'm saying, there's two applications out of three, but there are particular issues here, so so I think we really need to have direction in terms of where we're going to go, but I really don't want us to go down the road of saying, well, because there's a hundred or so objections on one, that gives different way to somebody who may well have one objection, so...
What we'll do is, yeah, we'll listen to the officer's report, we'll go through everything and then at the end, you know, the committee will decide the best route, you know. At the end of the day, we represent all the people and that's... that's just my view. So if Chris could now present then, please?
Thank you, Chairman. I'll try and get Crab Lane up on screen.
Thank you, yeah.
If you'll let me, right. Okay, I think that's working. Let me just see if I can. Can everyone see that?
Yes, yep.
Yes.
And let's try and get the pointer going. Come on, where are you, Mr Pointer? Ah, here we go. Right, okay. Right, so let's commence with with Crab Lane. The purpose of these three applications that you're going to hear tonight, well, now two is to provide single bedroomed, affordable housing to meet what is cited by the housing team as being a very great demand for such property, which these proposals will only really scratch the surface of. When it was initially mooted, there was some government assistance for temporary buildings for accommodation as a result of the Covid crisis. The proposal now is is far more to produce things that are are permanent and will stand the test of time rather than being something that would be there on a short term basis. So little pointer, you can see the the site. It doesn't extend quite to the end of the green strip, which is known locally as the Green Mile. There are a couple of pedestrian crossings across it, which I'll come to in a minute or two. And then there's a considerable proportion of the thing that isn't built upon to the east of the site. Now, not all the red lined area is developed, partially because this bit of land seems to have been left undeveloped in the past because there are features underground that that make it difficult to develop and and so actually constrain the nature of where you put development on it. Let's see that next one. So here's a slide of the proposal in terms of where we're building. And you'll see that you've got the buildings themselves close up to Crab Lane with a new two metre wide footway provided. And then you've got parking spaces set to the east end and between two of the blocks. This layout has not changed greatly over the the course of the development. You'll hear later that some of the other layouts have changed as a result of input from our designers. This one's remained in plan terms relatively unchanged. Come on now, how did you change? Oh. I need to use the up and down arrows, don't I? So one of the other things that came in more recently was that Norfolk County Council are asking for a condition to ensure that we get a stopping up agreement on the two little footways across the the thing. That that isn't something that was, I think, particularly mentioned in the report. It's it's something that's come up relatively recently, but that is a separate legal agreement between Norfolk County Council and the landowner, who happens to be us. I'll go round the site. Now, first of all, I must apologize, these were all taken in December. And make the site look absolutely dreadful. You'll you'll know that the residents nearby consider this to be a a very beneficial bit of open space that they use greatly for dog walking and as a children's play area. So I did attempt to actually lighten them up a little to make them look a little, a little bit more cheerful than than they were in the middle of December. So we are looking back towards the bus shelter. Just which is just beyond where the the last of the units would be. And you'll notice that there's also a fence, a chain link fence along the highway edge currently, which I think is perhaps what makes people feel relatively safe about letting their children play on it. Looking back towards the existing houses to the north. Showing you the pattern of development. And the blind gable flank walls. And again, another shot, very similar sort of shot across the chain link fenced area. And again, where there's a break in the chain link fence for a pedestrian crossing with bollards. And again, the from Forsythia Road, looking back down the east side, showing the dropped curbs and various other features. So on to the the buildings themselves. This is the revised finalized version, which was put out for separate consultation about a month ago. I think it was the third of March it went out and we allowed a fourteen day period for consultation. That's often shorter than the twenty one days. Given that people are already familiar with the proposals being made. And as you'll see. The only changes were to steepen the roof pitch. In fact, I have got, I have kept a slide in here. It shows the original scheme. And to put a flat roof over the staircase, which I think has the benefit of breaking down the massing of the thing a little bit. And there's the floor plan of the single up and down dwelling, which is the furthest block west. And again, another illustration of that with the lower roof on it. That's as first submitted. I thought I'd put that in because it's interesting to see that the taller roof does does add a little bit more purpose to the building, let's say, a bit more gravitas and the our designer felt that that was that was sensible. But what it does do, though, is mean that the the modular house has to come in in three parts because you can't get a steeper roof onto onto a lorry and get clear all the bridges. So it does slightly increase the cost, but I think at the the benefit of making it look a better proposal overall. I've asked for a shadow ground plot. The reason for this is it's a common urban design tool that is used to attempt to see whether you are putting something into a situation where it would appear cramped. So the the new buildings are shown here. And the other buildings within the locality are shown around it in shadow form without any roads being shown. And I think the the point I was trying to make is is that you have this sort of concluding feature to the north of the blocks that run north south at the moment. And this, the proposal to some extent acts to mirror that. So the key points to consider here are the amenity and separation for existing and new tenants. There are some windows that face towards the existing and some windows that face across the highway. But the primary, there are a couple of larger windows on the on the ends of the blocks. And the separation distances are relatively good and they're looking towards blind gable ends. Now, there is, I think by virtue of the way that they're they're sat on the on the site plan. A not excessive view of the areas towards the rears of people's back garden, sorry, the rears of people's houses in their back gardens. That's always considered to be the most sensitive, the outdoor spaces from the point of view of loss of privacy. But we think the separation distances or recommendations is that the separation distances are sufficient in planning terms for that not to be a material loss of privacy. The loss of the green space. It is clearly a space which is used for some recreational purpose, but it's not in planning policy terms considered to be public open space on the the mapping system. And you'll notice that that's reflected in the parts of the report that deal with policy. Going back a little bit on on into the report, where it comes to policy matters. Fundamentally, this is within the settlement and therefore the idea of new housing here is normally something that we'd be content with. Moving on to parking provision. Quite a lot of objectors bought up the fact that they had asked for permission to park or have parking spaces created within this particular green strip because of a shortage of parking within the overall estates. Now, what's quite interesting about this is that there are eighteen spaces for ten flats on this particular scheme. And the applicant has recently reminded me that that there would be no hypothecation, so to speak, no allocation of those spaces specifically to this scheme. In other words, others would be able to park there. So it would go some way to addressing that shortfall. Others have mentioned highway vision. The setting back by two metres and the distance from the junctions means that county highways are not objecting in any way to the scheme. What they have, however, asked for is a traffic regulation order because at the moment, there are red, no waiting lines on the on the corners. But not no waiting lines between the corners of the streets. And the the corners themselves, I mean, I do believe that the highway code says you can't park there anyway, but nevertheless, it serves to reinforce. And I think county highways are obviously concerned that they they would lose visibility if people were to park on Crab Lane. And that's why they want the T R O. Now, traffic regulation orders aren't part of a planning permission. They're something that has to be publicly consulted. So there's always a a degree of uncertainty that they'd ever be put into into place. But what the county want us to do is to pursue an agreement to finance the progress of a traffic regulation order. And that has been agreed to by the housing team. So the money is there for the county to put in place the procedures they need to at no cost to them to get traffic regulation orders. So I think the other thing I I do desperately need to do, I mean, obviously, section five point one of the report does put down in in detail, well, I say crazy detail, the the various objections that we've received. But of course, we have received other objections since the report was prepared, given that we still, we've recently had a consultation period. So I'll just move on to to those next. These are these are the the update. Actually, I've updated it since twenty fourth, twenty fourth of the third. These are now fully up to date. Somebody asked about the bus stop. The answer is it is outside the red line and will remain in place. We've got another objection saying that the proposals should be cancelled. As a disabled resident, I feel it's a meeting place for dog walkers, speaking to others as I live alone. A lot of people reflected on mental health and felt that the open space was very beneficial to them for that reason. There's this question of drug activity and antisocial behaviour. I think that's that's something that's perhaps occurring at the moment. Whether whether this proposal will worsen that is is a matter for members to to decide, although our our opinion would be that introducing new property into the locality tends to improve natural surveillance. And there will, there will be some comments later on in the presentation about police matters and designing out crime. So another person said Covid demands safe exercise space and a lot of children and adults use the the space. Nice wide open space closed in by ten dwellings. It will create an increased accident risk. I think this is reflecting the fact that people are worried that the buildings will reduce the ability to see out of Forsythia Close when you're accessing Crab Lane. As I say, county, don't don't share that. What is the need, someone asks, and also points out that the upper flats will not be accessible flats. Clearly, our allocation policy would have to reflect that. There is certainly no requirement in in building regulation law that you provide disabled access to all all levels. Somebody, in that same response, the person commented about there's a shortage of three bedroomed houses in in Gaulston. Somebody else made the point that there's, they felt there'd be an increased risk of flooding by building on the on the land, but we have, I had conversations with the local lead of flood authority. The only problem is this is a small scale scheme and therefore it's below their threshold for concern. Another person has said they will go to court to challenge any decision that is made under open space bylaws. I'm not sure whether that is doable, but another person, just buying a property attracted by the open space. There's an unused car part next to the pleasure beast being used as a pip pillar dump and the development could go there. Another, that we should limit the occupancy to old folk. So they could avoid paying bedroom tax if they're living in a, what is known as bedroom tax, should I say, if they're living in a a property that is bigger than their needs and then leave the larger homes for the young. Green spaces for exercise or for children. Another comment that the butcher's shop causes traffic buildup and allotment users park on the main road and there's a nearby busy sports field. There's another, another applicant or another contributor said people don't, who don't live here shouldn't decide the case. They're angry about flat pack housing. I think I should pick up on that. This is not flat pack housing. This is manufactured. Prefabricated in in factory conditions. Which tends to mean a better build quality than you can achieve on a on a site and then brought to site and erected. They are permanent buildings in that sense. Also reflecting on parking problems. Another that dog walkers and children need, use the space and that clear views, this is my words, clear views imbue safety. In other words, that when you have buildings, you can't see natural surveillance is is broken down by by the other buildings being present. Space should remain to give good vision for traffic and further highway improvement. And that there are empty homes that would serve better. And another one, oh dear, here we go, sorry. The 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 site will be claustrophobic and filled in. And I think this is the point where somebody asked about extra parking spaces for the shortfall that are occurring. And I think that brings me back again to the comment I made about that the space is not being hypothecated and there being a slight oversupply on this particular site, which could be used by people who live there. And then finally, somebody complained they couldn't see the files online and that the the area is communal in use constantly, all the time, that the parking's a nightmare. And where will the parking, parking be available for the new properties? Well, obviously, I think I've covered that point. And that buildings close to flats will be very overlooked. Let's move on again. This has been supplied to me today by the applicant. They were pointing out that they have carried out a similar scheme recently in Norwich, where in order to achieve secure by design. They have incorporated secure post boxes. And entry systems and and lighting around the building. Now, obviously, this is not part of this proposal at the moment, but it's it's an indication to members that this is the thinking of Broadland Housing Association and the housing team in terms of achieving secure by design status. What I what I do need to say is that in all cases. Although I had been looking, because the police had mentioned it, at the concept of installing CCTV. This has been stewed insofar as we do not normally have CCTV on our housing sites. And if we started if we put it in here, there might be a demand to put it in everywhere, which, given the council's housing estate, would be almost impossible to achieve. So that that is not something that is on offer. But of course, one can achieve secure by design by a number of different methods and and and, you know, it's a case of balance as to how you get to that that status. So at the moment, we still need a condition. But we're hoping that we can work towards getting that condition satisfied before the issue of any decision, because if I move on to the recommendation. You'll see that we need to conclude a section one oh six agreement for habitat regulation mitigation. This also involves having to agree a monitoring fee with Norfolk County Council because because it's our application, we can't monitor ourselves. So we have to pay someone else to do it. And at the moment. That agreement is still being finalized, although from the latest update I got from Rachel Garwood at Norfolk, MP Law today. It it looks as if it's imminent, although there is a a small point of argument over the extent of the of the of the of the fee necessary for monitoring this particular matter. It is simply a payment of a hundred and ten pounds per unit to satisfy the the habitat regulations with regard to mitigation of people's what's the word I'm looking for? Recreational activities, that's it. So moving down the other conditions. Obviously, timing and compliance are standard conditions, passive E V provision. What I'm hoping that they'll they'll do, the applicant and the designer is is providing me with a drawing, and I have asked for it before. Showing the position of ducts for charging points for electric vehicles. At the moment. We don't feel that we'd have to provide it, but we want to be able to do it without having to dig the the ground up again. Similarly, lighting, I'd like to see see information on that so that we can then further agree the lighting levels with regard. further agree the lighting levels with regard to concerns on ecology and indeed on discouraging crime. I mean, you've got this conflict always between satisfying the police with regard to light levels and at the same time not harming nocturnal creatures activities. But it's usually something that we can come to a compromise with those parties over. So we've got, they've done quite a lot of work on ground investigation. So they know very, they've characterised the land contamination in terms of both a phase one study and an intrusive phase two study and a mitigation proposal. And the environmental health officer is entirely happy with that and has just asked for an unexpected contamination during works condition, which is, you know, usual. Informative notes on the timing works and construction site management plan. Information's been provided, but it hasn't been reviewed by environmental health yet. So at the moment, we would still want to apply a condition. Landscaping information is received today, but it hasn't yet been reviewed by the county ecologist. So at the moment, we'd be saying we'd want the landscaping condition on the on the thing. That essentially concludes the the presentation for this site. I think that I said everything I was going to say on it. Thank you very much. The recommendation is to approve, notwithstanding what the chairman has said so far. But of course, that's for members to debate. How do I get out of this now?
Okay, thanks. Thank you, Chris. So we move to, I got any technical questions? Any members to the planning officer, please, just please indicate to Christina, please.
Chairman, it's difficult for me to see at the moment because Chris is still showing his screen. So the only person I can see at the moment is councillor Williamson.
Just try and share that.
Thank you, Chris. Yes, that's lovely. Yes.
Yeah, any technical questions, please indicate to Christina.
Yeah, councillor Williamson was first, please, Chair.
Councillor Williamson.
Thank you. Sorry, I've got one or two technical questions that I may, Chair.
Yeah.
May I ask first of all, Chris, was the design manager for the council involved in this and did he give a report?
You're talking about Darren, I think, aren't you?
Yes, it is my manager.
Yes, indeed. Darren has indeed been involved. That's why it went out to reconsultation. He has had considerable input, not so much on this one, because the layout didn't change. But he has on the on the beach coach station, which I'm going to present. I'm not sure if 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 I don't think there's any point in me presenting the middle one of the three, the Great Northern Close, unless I'm told otherwise.
Thank you. Another one, has a route, a traffic survey been carried out? It's classified as a C road.
Yes.
But I believe it's one of the main routes into Gawston from Belton and Bradwell.
I don't think that's quite the case anymore since the building of the bypass. Certainly, the county council, the highways people haven't asked for a traffic survey. Or indeed, given the threat, there's the size of the thing, it would be below the threshold, you know, you've only got ten units there.
Yeah, just, well, it is the the street scene, you mentioned the street scene in paragraph six point eight. What percentage of the green area is taken up by the housing? How much of the street scene is being lost to these houses?
Okay, well, in terms of the the total width of the green strip, I mean, I could go back to the.
I mean, the length, Chris.
Oh, the length of it?
Yes.
I'd have to call up a wider map to illustrate that, but I think it's a roundabout. It's less than a half, isn't it? It's under a half that's actually used up because this finishes by the time you get to the cemetery. Just where you hit the cemetery on the other side. I'd have to show you a wider site plan to give you a feel for that.
Thank you. And also the footpath, it's mentioned in the notes, in the details, officers report, that the footpath is a mitigating factor for it, which runs down beside the road. But it only runs in front of the houses, it doesn't run the full length, does it?
No, that's right. I think.
To the houses, it doesn't run the full length.
There are two footpaths, aren't there? There's the existing footpath across the site. Yeah, now, I'll confirm back.
Thanks very much, indeed.
There's an existing footpath that runs through the grassed area close to the the properties to the north, to their gable end. And then there is no footpath currently next to the road. But in pushing the houses back close to the road, you'd want to have some sort of gap there. At a two metre strip with a footway along, it makes complete sense in street scene terms.
It's mentioned as a factor for mitigating.
Yeah, because you end up.
Length, so you'd have to come back. Yeah.
You end up with.
Too much.
Okay.
Councillor Hammond, next, please, Chair.
Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Chair. Couple of things that you said about CCTV first, saying that we couldn't ask ourselves to put it in. We have asked applicants in the past to fit CCTV and it would be hypocritical of us as councillors not to ask ourselves if we've done it in the past. So I don't think that's something we could rule out totally. And then you went on to say about charging points that you would put ducting in for them. If you're going to put ducting in for charging points, then you're going to have to allocate parking spaces per flat where you're going to take the duct into. So they know where to park for the ducting, should you put the charging points in. So that doesn't free up all the parking spaces, which you said would be open for anyone to use. Thirdly, and it's just a minor thing of mine, I don't like floor to whatever height windows. Be it a one bedroom property, it is for two people and normally two people soon become three. And toddlers run into glass and have all sorts of accidents. So I'm not totally certain. We've done due diligence on secure by design with that. They're my three points and if I can have some answers.
Are there questions? I'm not quite.
Well, yeah.
The thinking on the charging points is that if you have a charging pillar, it will serve more than one parking bay. So if you provide a duct in the ground with a pull through, that will give you some future proofing for electric vehicles. Your question about the full height windows, I mean, clearly, the building regulations require safety glass below a certain height anyway. With regard to children being present, I think you'd have to discuss, or that would be a question for the housing team at the relevant juncture during this meeting.
Okay, councillor Hammond. Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, CCTV.
Yes, CCTV. As I say, I was under the impression that we might be talking about CCTV, but I've had it confirmed back to me today that it's unusual for the council to apply CCTV on their own schemes.
But we have asked for it in other schemes and this is a scheme before us. So why should we give ourselves preferential treatment over another development?
Yep. Okay.
Councillor Bird, next, Chair.
Yeah, councillor Bird.
Yes, Chairman, just two really. Where is the, I don't know the area that well, so where is the nearest playing field or the nearest area which children can visit to?
Yes, that's a very excellent question, actually. I should have put a slide in to show that. It's within about a hundred and thirty metres of this this land. If you just go to the, you know, I showed you the shadow ground slide where you could see the properties that run north, south away from the to the north of this development. And then there's another block of houses that run east, west above that. And then beyond that, there's a play area or, you know, an open space, should I say, which is a formal adopted open space within the local plan. One of the interesting comments we got back from objectors was that the bigger children tend to gather there and make it very difficult for the smaller children to play.
Okay.
Right, just one other part was the, we state here that it's fifty metres per square unit. Is that still the case? That will still be the case, fifty metres per one bed or two person accommodation, yes?
That is correct and that does meet with the government's minimum standards, all the technical standards they've set out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, councillor Bird. Is anybody else, Christina?
Councillor Myers, Chairman.
Councillor Myers.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Yeah, just one question and one observation. Access to the car parks, I'm quite determined, is that going to be from Crab Lane or down Forsyth Row, then back through the existing developments?
No, they are off Crab Lane.
So people are going to egress and then get on off Crab Lane to the car parks?
Correct.
Okay. And secondly, as they're not designated to the area, to the new build, okay, there's an extra couple of car parking spaces. I have a concern that because they're not designated to this particular development, there's going to cause issues with people who are going to use them. And then people who actually want to get to their flats, parking halfway down the road or somewhere else because they're already taken up with other people. So that's a concern. It's going to cause conflict with all the existing residents.
Is that a question?
No, that was an observation.
Ah.
Okay, any other technical questions for the planning officer, please?
Councillor Bird still has his hand, but I'm not sure if it's a legacy hand or another question, Chairman.
No.
No.
Okay, then. So at this point then, I call Mr Chris Stammers, the applicant's agent, to speak, please.
Good afternoon, members. Can you can you see me?
Yes, Chris, yes.
Excellent. I understand I have five minutes. Is that the case?
Yeah, that's correct. You have five minutes and I'll give you a thirty second warning near the end.
Oh, that's very kind. Okay, thank you. Yes, I'm the architect for the development on behalf of my client, Great Yarmouth Borough Council. And I'd like to thank members for giving me the opportunity to speak this afternoon. Chris Green's given an excellent overview of the proposed development. I won't dwell on matters he's already raised, but I will address some of the key issues in relation to the proposals. Firstly, I reiterate that the objective of this project is to address an overriding housing need and pressing housing need for the provision of one bedroom accommodation in the borough with currently a hundred and sixty five applicants currently on the waiting list to be rehoused into one bed accommodation. Last year, only a hundred and eight homes became available in this category. And you can see that the current supply cannot meet the housing needs of single people and childless couples, which has been exacerbated by the issues falling out of the Covid pandemic. The scheme, as we've heard as part of initiative, of three projects to increase the number of one bedroom homes within the council's housing stock and the number of available homes within the council's housing revenue account, all of which will be at lesser affordable rents. Great care has been taken with all three sites to adopt a holistic design approach that focuses on the quality of the scheme environment, the external appearance, the internal livability of the dwellings and to make sure that they contribute positively towards the surroundings. And the schemes have been developed in conjunction with Broadland Housing Association and extensively consulted upon with appropriate amendments made, as you've heard. The project teams work very closely with council officers and key stakeholders to ensure that the development ensures the creation of a high quality, well designed scheme which respects characteristics of the site and is a good neighbour to those that live nearby. If you don't mind, I'll share a short video in the background that will hopefully help answer some of your concerns about context. And I'll just share my my screen and continue to talk over that. It flies along Crab Lane and around the then around the development. So as you can see, the sites on the site, a piece of land named as the Green Mile to the south of the Shrublands development. In answer to your earlier question.
Unfortunately, it's not, your video is not showing.
Okay, it may just take a couple of seconds.
Okay, then, that's just thought I'd let you know.
Thank you. It should loop. Tell me if you can see that. The the proposals take up approximately one third of the Green Mile and then not all of the entire width. So for the length, we maintain areas of green space suitable for residence and walking and local amenity on the on the north side of the development.
Unfortunately, Chris, it's still not showing, so.
Okay. Okay, try again that.
Yes, it is now, Chris. Yeah.
The developments are ranged in linear form, so there are three blocks of two, four and four flats. As we've heard, they're at fifty square metres per unit, which is which is meets the government's national space standards. It's in excess of those sizes you'd get from a private developer. And there's amenity space that's located to the north of the development, between the green area and the Shrublands Estate and towards the back of the blocks. As Chris has said, we're providing eighteen car parking spaces for ten flats, so an over provision of approximately eight to assist with local car parking problems. Careful consideration has been given to landscaping, to passive natural surveillance, to deal with some of those issues of secure by design and to increase the quality of the street scene and the overlooking of the area. In addition, there's substantial new planting, improved biodiversity as a result associated with the development. Architecturally, the brick matches that of the neighbouring surroundings with a sort of light sandy coloured stock. And as we've heard during the consultation process, the roof pitches have been increased to a steeper pitch to to sit more comfortably with the local environment. Overall, it's undeniable that an increase in housing of this type is desperately needed. It's important that this need is made as quickly as possible. The modern method of construction of modular homes that the council selected will mean that the scheme could be delivered in a significantly shorter timeframe. And should the proposal be approved, these homes will be ready for occupation during January twenty twenty two. It's evident that the need for such accommodation is overwhelming and there are no planning reasons as to why permission should not be granted. We therefore respectfully request that officers endorse the recommendation of their officer and grant permission. Thank you. I have my colleague here, Jake Lambert, as well, if you have any technical questions that you would like to ask members.
Thank you, Mr Stammers. Has there any members got any technical questions to ask the agent, please? Councillor Wainwright?
Yeah, Chris, if I could ask you to stop sharing your screen, please, so that I can see the members. Thank you.
Yep, councillor Wainwright.
Just on the video, I mean, that was very good. Can you tell me, Chris, how far, because obviously on that video, we saw people driving bikes and cars down the road. How far is the road from the windows of the properties? So if you're going down towards Gawston, obviously, you're driving down there. How close to those houses would you be when you're on the left hand side of the road?
Sorry, between the new development and Crab Lane itself.
Yes.
You'll be approximately three metres, councillor.
And ten foot from, so that's the closest point to the road, yeah, basically?
Yeah.
Thank you. Have we, anybody else with any technical questions, please?
I can't see another hand, Chair, and there's nothing in the chat.
Okay, thank you, Mr Stammers, for your time and your input today. Thank you. Okay, then, I now call upon any ward councillors who wish to speak regarding this application, please, to chair.
Councillor Williamson, Chairman.
Councillor Williamson.
Yes, yes, thank you, Chairman. I've been asked to present these opinions from the local residents. And they're not my necessarily my opinions, but I'm representing the local residents while I'm saying this. The real concern for this development is the loss of open space in this particular area. Clayton Ward has the least, the smallest amount of open space of any ward in the borough of Great Yarmouth. This would actually take away more open space in the ward. The nearest play area isn't a hundred and twenty metres away, it's more like over two hundred metres away. Nearest play area is beside the pub on the shrubs, quite a distance from some of these houses. Maybe quite close to the first house, first near Forsythia, often other houses is a long way away. There's a real feeling about this lot of open space, about the fact that the Crab Lane is a very fast moving road. Contrary to what has been said before, it is the main route into Gawston for people who live in Bradwell and in Belton. One wouldn't go down the bypass. It's nearly three miles across the bypass to get to the A forty seven. So you would come down to Crab Lane and go into Crab Lane and into the town centre. That's the way I always use and I'm sure everyone else does. It's a very busy route, as has been pointed out by the Bradwell Butchers, which causes a blockage at one end. And this, I am really concerned that because in the in the report, it states the. And this, I am really concerned that because in the report, it states the houses are two metres from the road, not three metres. So even two or three metres, to create this kind of tunnel effect down Crab Lane, I think really destroys the street scene. And we should be considering what our streets look like, whether they're welcoming places. And I find that's really, this is one of the things which was brought up to me by residents. The residents also feel that the design is not compatible with the rest of the area. It's out of context and that fact. They do support extra housing. People are not against the extra housing or housing of this nature. It's just where it is on this particular piece of open space. I mean, I wouldn't want to go through all the objections on page 40, sorry, in page six of the report because there's acres of them. But it does really actually centre around the actual access to the space. This space is crucial for the Shrublands Estate. The Shrublands Estate, which was a previous prefab estate and then converted in the 70s to permanent housing. And it certainly is a very important area. It's used by young children, it's used by people that play on football, et cetera, and it's used by people walking. It is an area of space. It's a significant loss if this happens. And it does take up, I would say, at least up to 50% of that area of Crab Lane between Forsyth, between the top, near the allotments in Bradwell, which is Bradwell, and then down as far as the roundabout near the old Meg Arms. So it's quite a bit of area there, but the residents really feel very strongly about this, that this is a bad move in this particular area. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Is it, there's no other ward councillors?
No, I'm, no.
No, okay.
No, chairman. Councillor Williamson is the only ward councillor for the area.
Okay then. So we move to the debate. I mean, what do the councillors think? Personally, I still feel that we should go and have a look at the site. It's entirely up to you if we have a vote on that today. Obviously, if you turn that down, then we will go to the vote. But I think, you know, referring with councillor Williamson, you know, that there are a lot of concerns. And I think, you know, we all represent our residents. And I think the correct thing to do is to go and have a look at the site so we are all familiar, very familiar with that area. But obviously, there are some councillors who are not. So I think the correct thing is to go and have a look.
I would support that, chairman. As ward councillor, I would support that. So everyone has a clear vision of the area.
Yes.
Chairman, councillor, there's several councillors who'd like to speak. Councillor Tony Wright first?
Yes, councillor Wright?
Chairman, I have no objection to a site visit. You know my view on site visits. I've always supported site visits, but I think you have to be very careful with the reasons as to why we have a site visit. If it's just because there's been a significant number of objections, then I think you're on dangerous territory there. Because then you're going to say to people, well, if you object, we'll have a site visit. I think we should have a site visit if it's needed. And I'm certainly happy that if the ward councillor has suggested that we have one, then that would be a reason to have a site visit to look at it, but certainly not because of a number of objections. I'm not saying it's not a strong opinion. What I'm suggesting is, as I said before, that if there's one objection or a thousand objections, we should give them equal weight. But I'm quite happy, if the ward councillor is happy with that, then I'm happy to support the ward councillor in that particular respect.
Okay, councillor Wright. Yeah, I'd just like to be seen that we are doing the correct thing for the people and not just bulldozing heads. So who's next, please?
councillor Wainwright.
Yeah, councillor Wainwright?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I mean, I do agree with a site visit. I mean, they're not unique. I mean, when we had East Anglian Way, we had site visits and we listened to the people. I mean, there's been 154 objections. And it's not a standard letter, it's objections that are coming from all the range of people. I mean, we've had site visits out in Hamsby where we've listened to the residents. So we do need to listen to the residents and I would absolutely support a site visit. I mean, I know the area quite clearly. There's councillors on here who don't, which is understandable. We don't know every inch of Great Yarmouth when we represent a ward. So, you know, I would certainly represent them. But as I say, it's not unique. And the last big one we had was East Anglian Way, and that was to listen to the residents.
Yes. Yep.
councillor Myers, next, chairman.
Yeah, councillor Myers?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. I'm going to come back again to the car parking. And I think supporting a site visit on that is saying it's not a main road into Goulston. It's a main road into Goulston where people live in Belton and Fritons and Olives. We all come down that road and I use that road frequently. And the amount of traffic going down there, and I've got serious concerns about cars egressing out of that car park across a pavement, which they don't do at the moment because the Forsyth Road is fenced off. And so people can actually step behind a vehicle that's waiting at the junction. I think it's just horrible. And I think councillors really need to see that and to see the amount of traffic that goes down there and to consider the amount of cars that will be going in or trying to get off and get on to that road, onto the car parks. Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
councillor Freeman?
councillor Freeman?
Thank you, chairman. Yeah, just supporting the call for a site visit. This is, it's important that we're seen to be actually listening to people. And I appreciate, and I say what, hear what Tony Wright says, that we should listen, whether it's one objector or 100. But at the same time, there is a good range of objections and I think it's important. I know the site well, but I don't know if everybody else does. I think it's important we have that site visit, chairman. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
councillor Flaxman-Taylor?
Yeah. councillor Flaxman-Taylor?
Yes, thank you, chairman. I also agree with a site visit. And also, there are a few members that aren't aware of that site. Malcolm Bird, he obviously mentioned that he wasn't aware. A few issues I've got over some of the conditions. So hopefully, by the time we come back to the next planning meeting, we'll have a few of these conditions tied up with more answers, especially on the police comments regarding the designing out crime. It'd be good to have some more feedback from some of these conditions for the next meeting.
Thank you.
councillor Williamson, Chair?
Yeah, councillor Williamson?
Yeah, yes, thank you. As a member of DC now, yes, I'd bring people's attentions to 9.4 on page 12, 9.7 and 9.9, and on page 13, 9.13. I think they're really significant. 9.7 especially. It's true, the character of Crab Lane will change, and I think it will change for the worse. It actually restricts that street scene dramatically and takes away the better look of that street. And also on 9.13, what was mentioned by the person representing the developers in the report, it says two metres from the highway on 9.13. Now, it's either, either the report is incorrect or the person representing the developers is incorrect. So therefore, we need that bottomed out. The other issue we've got, which councillor Adrian Myers raised, is a really significant one. Parking was refused here for residents four years ago by the housing department. It was refused on the grounds that there were underground services, which we're aware of, and on the grounds of access of cars making it dangerous. And now the residents have refused extra parking and now we're producing entrances onto Crab Lane, which to me is excessively dangerous. It is a very far, it shouldn't be that far, but I'm afraid it does, it's over 30 on many occasions. It's a bus stop, it's a main route into the town. It really concerns me. So I think those issues need to be taken into account. 9.4, 9.7, 9.9 and 9.13 are essential to be considered in this matter.
Thank you, councillor Williamson.
councillor Hammond?
Yep. councillor Hammond?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I totally agree with what all the other councillors have said. My one concern is that we have to do a site visit in peak traffic times. We don't go there sometime where there's no traffic. So we need to go either early or late.
Yep, I agree with that.
On a school day.
councillor Fairhead, now, please?
Yeah, councillor Fairhead?
Yeah, I have to agree. For me, it is the traffic coming down that road. And when you visualise that, it already is a problem outside the allotment gates. People park on the road there. Then you're on top of the bus stop, the bus stops there. Then you've got these entrances in and out, and I just think it's going to cause so much chaos. I'd like to move that we do a site visit, please.
Yep, thank you. Anybody else wish to speak?
There are hands up from councillor Flaxman-Taylor and Williamson, but I'm not sure if they're legacy hands and chairman. Yeah, they were both legacy hands. So no, that's, and there's nothing else in the chat bar, Chair.
So, yeah, so I propose that we have a site visit and obviously defer it until we've had the site visit. I think that's the correct thing to do for the residents. So at this point, if nobody else has got anything to say.
No, Chair, you proposed it and it was seconded by councillor Bernard Williamson.
Yep.
So I shall now do a roll call to vote on deferral of the application.
Yep.
Okay, thank you, Chair. councillor Anderson?
Four.
councillor Bird?
Four.
councillor Fairhead?
Four.
councillor Flaxman-Taylor?
Four.
councillor Freeman?
Four.
councillor Hammond?
Four.
councillor Lorn?
Four.
councillor Mogford?
Four.
councillor Myers?
Four.
councillor Wainwright?
Four.
councillor Williamson?
Four.
councillor Bee Wright?
Four.
councillor T Wright?
Four.
Thank you, chairman. That's unanimous. The application has been deferred pending a site visit.
Thank you. And a great result. Okay, thank you. So open four is also been deferred to a later date. So, sorry?
Right. Sorry, chairman. I've just had a conversation with the monitoring officer in the background. I do apologise. The monitoring officer would like you to agree a date for the site visit now, if possible, please.
Well, whenever, whenever possible, really.
After the schools have gone back.
Yeah.
Chairman, after the schools have gone back, otherwise you don't get the right traffic amounts.
Yeah. Yeah, sort of in the next, well, couple of weeks' time, but it's definitely got to be done, like they say, when it's busy. Sorry?
Week beginning the 12th?
Yeah, yeah. Is everybody happy with that?
Excuse me, chairman, can I just put myself on mute? I just need to speak to the monitoring officer.
Yeah, that's fine. If you just hang on a sec, thank you.
Sorry, chairman, sorry, members. I've had a word with the monitoring officer and dean and we're going to get something in the diary week commencing Monday the 12th of April. And obviously, you want it, did you say, outside of school times or in school times?
In school time, at the busiest, at the busiest moment down that road.
In school time. And what time is that, please, chairs? I'm not familiar with.
Well, I would sort of say between sort of eight and nine o'clock. I should think that's when there's chaos.
Right.
Everybody happy with that?
Is that all right, chairman? If you leave that with me and I will get that sorted?
Yes, yeah, or between three and four, councillor Williamson says. As long as that's doing them. Yeah, yeah.
All right then. Thank you very much.
Can I just say before we go, I can't do Tuesdays. So if Tuesday could be avoided, I'd be grateful because some of us do have to work now again.
No, councillor Wainwright, I know you can't do Tuesdays. I have that engraved on my wrist. In ink, it says councillor Wainwright cannot do meetings on a Tuesday.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay then. Right, so yeah, we move to open number five, which is the Beach Coach Station. And I invite Chris Green, senior planning officer, to present again on pages 29 to 40 of your agenda. Chris?
Sorry, I have to unmute myself. I just realised before I tried to open up the presentation. Still getting used to this. Ah, share, come on, share. Sorry about the delay. Okay, can everyone hear me?
Yeah.
Yep, okay. So this is a proposal for single bedroomed affordable flats on the part of the former Beach Coach Station. Let me just get up my pointer. There we go, that's better. Towards the south end, close to existing flats owned by Great Yarmouth Borough Council at the south and properties along Wellesley Road that back on to this part of the site. There's the coach station building here, which incorporates toilets and a takeaway food shop. And of course, the remainder of the open space that is used for parking. So the site plan. And perhaps more slightly more interestingly, this is the, again, I've left in the original plan that was first arrived with us to give you some flavour as to what changes have taken place as a result of negotiations. This was reconsulted. Again, I have a record that reconsulted on the 3rd of the 3rd 21 to neighbours, ward councillors and county highways. We did receive a further objection. I shall just briefly explain what the issue was with this particular plan. There were a couple of issues. One of the things that really was problematic was that this area here, where I've got highlighting, was at first and second floor level was an open balcony. So one came up the stairs and then went on to an open balcony. And I think that, in the way that open balconies are, far more intrusive with regard to overlooking and of course, the potential for noise at an elevation. So when we got a revised plan, I think that it was truly worthwhile, having gone through the exercise of actually thinking about how the thing could be made better. And the later plan is this one. Now, what this does is it eliminates the open balconies and makes all of the access decks internal. This is very necessary when you've got a three storey development. The one, Crab Lane obviously was two story, as is the proposal now at Great Northern Close, which we're not presenting today. But three stories, a building regulation starts to create a few problems for people when they try to have open access balconies. And also, with this single bedroom floor plan, having the entrance door towards the middle of the floor plate makes a lot of sense in terms of travel distances for, in the case of fire and also not passing through or past kitchen areas before getting to the door from sleeping accommodation. So that is certainly an improvement. The other thing that it does is by making it H pattern, it reduces the overall bulk of the block in itself. And to the south, I think the separation distance is about the same as what it was originally. And it's very similar with regard to this side. But what is better from the point of view of the neighbours as well is that the principal outlooks are north and south on that block. And the principal outlooks are east and west on this block. So reducing the overlooking windows facing towards neighbours. There is however, a kitchen window that remains on this side that if members felt was necessary, when they have heard the recent objection letter that came as a result of the reconsultation, could be specified in conditions as obscure glass. I didn't think that was strictly necessary, but I just throw that in as a thought. This particular site delivers 18 properties, so it's regarded as a major development. There are 18 parking spaces provided for it along this edge here. I don't think anyone is suggesting there's a lack of parking in this area thanks to the fact that Beach Coach Station car park is pretty large. Of course, I do believe it becomes very well subscribed at peak holiday times. The idea would be that the development, although they haven't shown on this particular plan where the fencing would go, it would be closed off from the general public. And that, those drawings have yet to be submitted and agreed as part of the designing out crime exercise that we would normally reserve by condition. But hopefully, information will be provided before the section 106 agreement is signed, as per the other case. So just moving around the site, you can see that the concerns are very definitely about overlooking relationships and whether we can, I mean, the distances are great enough to, and the orientation's great enough to not be worried about loss of direct sunlight and outlook. At that sort of distance is not considered to be harmed, but privacy is a matter for concern. And therefore, having the east-west relationship of outlook on this particular block, the southernmost of the three is a good thing. You'll also notice that this picture taken in December, the planting does seem to be remarkably leafy stills. I'm not quite sure what species they are, but it does. leafy still, so I'm not quite sure what species they are, but it does offer some obscurance. Clearly overlooking the, the Beach Coach Station facilities block is not, is not an issue. There's no privacy matter there to concern. Then looking east across the site, this particular building here appears to be in commercial uses, and therefore, I think even though it's very, very close to where the properties will be, I don't think we're going to call the same outlook or privacy value on, on a hotel or a guesthouse, as one would have to do if it was a permanent residential use there. And there it is again. You'll see that the, the rear extension here at higher levels is, is blind. But nevertheless, there is a reasonable separation distance, and as I say, the principal windows don't face that way, but I am beginning increasingly think that the obscure glass condition might make some sense on the kitchen window in the, in the, in the case of these. So coming back to the, the plans, we have a narrow window from the, from the dining room, which is something that could be obscure glazed quite easily, because you've got outlook north and south. You have a kitchen window, which again, I think should be obscure glazed, and, and a bathroom window, which will be obscure glazed. That, that essentially is the blocks one and two, the northern pair of blocks. And then elevation wise, I think Darren has worked to achieve something that looks rather akin to the Dutch housing with the steeper gables and the large fenestration on those elevations. And then the, the southern block is staggered. I'm not quite sure why the staggering arrangement was, was arrived at, but it does, it does add a little bit of interest to, to the whole thing. And there's the elevations of the north of the, the south, north and south blocks of the southernmost of the blocks, let's say. And the east and west elevations, again, those, those larger windows, that more impressive facade in, in that direction. And just to give you a flavour of what was originally submitted, you'll see again, this, this is the effect you get with the shallower roof, which I think is a less successful effect, and the L shape. And so I have a few overall views around the site. I'll leave that up there for a minute or two, so members can take a good look at it, because I think that is really very explanatory. And you'll see, actually, they have started to draw on some of the gating there to the common areas. And again, we have had an objection from, from one of the, from, from one of the neighbours, actually, I will go, go on to that in a second, partly as a result of the reconsultation, but also, as mentioned before, about this bin store. Because of course, the neighbour property on Wellesley Road are over on this side of the slide. They're saying, oh, there'll be smells from the bin store. Now, I, I think I have some difficulty with, with taking that as a, as, as something that we should be particularly concerned about, given that people do park their bins almost anywhere within their curtilage in normal domestic situations. However, the party involved has sort of suggested that communal bins may be more of a problem, because obviously the maintenance and management of that is, is more an issue. It would be perfectly feasible to relocate that bin store to another part of the site and to insist upon that. And there we are, that's another view. I think that's a bit more difficult to, where are we oriented? Oh, that's, that's the, but that's the southernmost of the, of the things. What they haven't done is shown any detail on the vast area of the car park, or indeed cemetery over here. What they've shown is the roof there of the utility block for the coach station. And again, slightly different lower view, giving you some sort of impression as to the size of windows and where they are. We've had a, an updated ecology report submitted again, pretty late the day, around about twenty-fourth of March. However, County Ecology have excelled themselves and got back to me today and said that they're generally content, but they would like to see a few more bat boxes supplied and some hedgehog gaps to be conditioned. Actually, since it looks to me as if the fences and gates are actually railings, that shouldn't be a problem in this instance. But can be agreed. And again, the door entry system details that were provided for the Norwich site have been provided for all three sites, so I've incorporated that slide today. So I think I've dealt with amenity and separation. I've left flood risk in there, because technically, a very tiny portion of part of the site is within the flood zone, but it's not where there's any buildings standing. And the resilience officer made absolutely no comment on this particular one. Flood Zone Two notionally covers just this tiny little area towards the, the southeast corner of the site, which is, as I say, not built upon. Loss of parking has been mentioned by some parties in, in objection. But I, I find it very hard to, to agree that that is a material planning reason to, to refuse this, given the planning balance where provision of affordable housing is such a critically required thing. And given the immense size of the rest of the, the car park, that the objection recently received, as a result of the reconsultation, which I will read out, because it's not in the report, objected to increased overlooking with the loss, with the design which removed the, the open balconies, or the open access platform, should I say. They also said that the garden and how, sorry, that the car parking was too close to the boundary, and that there would be increasing noise, and that the bin store was, was, was too close and had communal use, which I think I've, I've commented on already. Yep, so I think I've covered that matter. So we've got the, no, I think I have covered that too. Oh, Rachel Garbutt, yes, just commenting again on the, the fact that we haven't got the section one oh six completed, absolutely, but we are very close to being in a position where that can be signed off. So, moving on again, the recommendation is to approve subject to the conclusion of the section one oh six for habitat mitigation and the monitoring thereof. Standard timing and compliance conditions. One of the good things is that we, I think, none of the pre-commencement conditions, if we did have to apply them at this present moment, would have, or sorry, none of the conditions would have to be strictly pre-commencement. They could all have a, a trigger point a little later in the build process. But clearly, it would be good to, again, to agree electric vehicle and security measures, because they can have implications with regard to groundwork and lighting, for any external lighting. So, so that, that would allow any further information to be supplied later in the build project. The county highways asked for sort of conditions that didn't require any kind of further pre-commencement information, but just, you know, wanted the, the parking bays to be made available prior to occupation. We had a hard and soft landscaping condition that we were going to apply, but again, the information has been supplied recently, and it's been accepted by both the county, in fact, I've just mentioned that, the county ecologists and, and our, our own arborist have, have said that with a site revision, they're, they're satisfied with that. So we've got the, again, unexpected contamination during the works. Again, there's been a lot of contaminated land work has been carried out already. You know, they've done intrusive surveys, they've characterised what they've found, and they've come up with a methodology for remediation where necessary. To the extent that the, in fact, I don't think they've found anything. That's why, why the EHO has just asked for unexpected contamination during construction. And then he's also asked for the usual works-based timing of works and air quality during construction conditions. So that does again conclude that presentation. Thank you, Chairman. Let me just try and get out of this.
Thank you, Chris.
I've got to stop sharing, haven't I? Where are we?
Yes, Chris.
Here we go. Okay, I think that's done.
Yep, yep, that's fine. I think we've got councillor Hammond first, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Yep. Councillor Hammond.
Thank you, Chris. Could you tell me what the AOD is for that site at ground floor level? Because we have in the last year refused somewhere because they didn't have an AOD of three point five.
Oh, the, I see, the actual, yes, above datum. I, I can't tell you that.
Within two hundred metres of this site.
Yeah, I can't, I can't actually tell you that, but I haven't, they, they've done a lot of work insofar as this one is over the threshold for the local flood authority, so they have been involved. And there's been flood risk assessments carried out and, and drainage works carried out. The, they weren't able to demonstrate that they could drain to the land, but they have satisfied that with hydropack, they can discharge to the surface water skewer, and both the local lead flood authority and the angling water themselves have agreed to that. So there are no conditions suggested in that regard. I don't think.
I'm just concerned about the AOD, because we've refused flats at ground floor level, because they weren't above three oh five, within a couple of hundred metres of this, and we're now going to pass ground floor flats, and I don't believe the ground has increased in height that much over that hundred metres.
No, you're, you're correct in, in saying that, but I think what I'll have to do is defer to the technical assistance that we can get from the, the agent when he makes his comments in, in a wee while. But all I can say is, it's been through the process with, with engineers, and it's been backwards and forwards with the local lead flood authority on a number of occasions, before they got to a situation where they said they were able to grant, you know, say, no objection and no conditions required, because initially, they'd been asking for quite a lot of further information to be supplied, but that has all been dealt with, to my knowledge.
Okay. Yeah, I'm not sure who's next, is it?
Councillor Williamson next.
Yeah, councillor Williamson.
Thank you, thanks, Chairman. I'm just concerned, I realise the design manager, again, has been involved, but it would be nice on the internal consultations to see his report. If we're going to have this consulted, may the members actually see the result of that sort of consultation?
Shall I come back on that, Chair?
Yes, please.
Okay. As a matter of principle, because we've, we, we consider that conservation services is, is internal to, to this department, we tend to not explain their, their input to any great degree usually, because we don't want to be seen to be fighting against ourselves as, as a team. We're part of a team. And that's why that, that kind of consultancy, you'll, you'll probably usually see in reports, it often says conservation comments are incorporated into the body of the report.
I don't think they're part of your department, the design manager.
Sorry, sorry, I didn't.
I wasn't aware they were part of your department. I think we've had reports in the past from the conservation officer. I think it's important if you're going to quote the design manager, and he gives it the sign-off.
Councillor?
Councillor Myers next, Chair.
Thank you, Chair, yeah. I'm just looking, Chris, I'm just looking at the satellite view of the area which we're talking about, and I'm comparing that to the plans. And although the plans look wonderful with all the open spaces around the side, which of course isn't the true depiction of it, because there's not open spaces around the side of the, the three D plans that we had. Looking at the, the viewed plans from the top, and then looking at the satellite view, where the place is the first building which goes sort of that way across the plan, and then you've got two more buildings that go that way, so it's called horizontal to the plan. On the right-hand side of the plan, there is an angular sort of part that comes in, which is depicted by the end parts of the houses of the garden. So, it, looking at that, it does seem quite a small area in, in which these are being put in, and I'm struggling to contextualise the area covered by these three developments within that point, and the satellite view of what I'm getting. I mean, perhaps the satellite view is a little bit condensed, I don't know, but I am struggling to correlate the two together. Thank you.
Thank you.
I can see no other hands, Chairman, and there's nothing in the chat bar.
Okay then, so I now call on Mr Chris Stammer again, the agent, to come forward to present, please.
Members, thank, thank you again for your, for your time, and Chris, thank you again for your, your, your excellent presentation. As, as with the previous scheme, these proposals are for affordable one-bedroom accommodation, much needed in the borough, as, as, as we've discussed. The scheme is proposed on a currently unused part of the Beach Coach Station car park site, which was an area marketed for sale for several months last year with, with no commercial interest. The proposed development comprises eighteen one-bedroom flats arranged in three blocks, as you've seen, with six flats in each block, up to three stories high. Significant considerations have been given to the quality of the proposed environment and the positive contribution the proposals can make to this, this part of Great Yarmouth and the wider setting, and also how, how they can create a really great place to live, that's an attractive and, and landscaped sort of private compound, if you, if you like, which, which vastly improved the outlook for existing residents. If you will, I'll again share my screen and run a video in the background to help contextualise the, the development. Hopefully, it should buffer a bit quicker than, than the previous one. Can you, can you all see that, Chris?
No, not at the moment, Chris.
We'll just leave that, we'll leave that running in the background. As, as we said, each block contains three flats over three stories. Each flat is fifty square metres as, as before, meeting its national space standards, providing an open space living room, kitchen dining, and as well as a double bedroom with built-in storage. The question in relation to floor level, the AOD of the floor level is actually at four point nine, so significantly above the three point five that, that, that was referenced. Ground floor flats have their own individual access, and all flats have large windows to maximise natural light and to add to the feeling of space. Any update on visibility of the video yet?
Yes, it's running now, Chris.
Okay, good, okay. Well, I'll keep it up playing in the background. As with all three schemes, there's been a strong emphasis on secure by design, hence the, the measures that, that have been discussed, discussed in terms of street surveillance, passive surveillance of, of, of open spaces, and the fence security measures that, that will, will, will offer privacy and, and security to, to, to the open space beyond. The, as discussed, there's been a consultation with, with Great Yarmouth's internal conservation team that's resulted in some of the, the, the design changes. You can see here with this split level block, why we've, we've split this block to align accesses on, on key views into the development. This area to the east is, is the landscape garden with attractive planting, bicycle storage, et cetera, as well as additional tree planting. The, we've got for dark colour of brick on this site, more in keeping with the, the, the neighbouring residences. And again, the scale of this sort of reflects the scale of the Victorian villas on, on Wellesley Road, so it, it should sit well. In terms of adjacency, the body of the, the closest block to the east is, is twenty-one metres, although there are some outshuts, which don't have principal windows that, that stick out from the main body of the buildings on the, on, on the east towards the site. And it's twenty metres to the south, to the council's, to the council's flat scheme. The, overall, the high-quality external design has matched the intention to detail in, in, in the provision of, of open spaces. We've provided fifteen car parking spaces for residents as part of this development, which will be bollarded, will have bollard control, so that they, that, that they can't be used by most of the public. But again, I think there's, there were no highways objections to this proposal, and there's a significant amount of visitor space available in the, in the car park to the north of, the north of the site. As with all three applications being made today, careful contextual analysis of the areas have been carried out with the schemes to reflect the relationship to adjacent buildings and ensure that overlooking is, is, is within acceptable planning limits, and the quality of materials intended to reflect the robust design necessary for, for a coastal location. In summary, there's, the, the, there's a clear and overwhelming need for this housing type within the borough, and not only will all of these dwellings go towards addressing this crisis in lack of, in, in, in lack of available housing, and particularly one-bed available housing, it will be occupied by those of the highest need. As a council, Great Yarmouth are clear that they want to lead the way in providing safe, secure and quality housing, and these projects demonstrate their commitment to delivering homes that will improve the quality of lives for the most vulnerable who occupy them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr Stammers. Any, members got any technical questions, please, for the agent? Councillor Bird?
Yes, Chair. Like the other properties where, where he was showing parking. Yes, Chair, like the other properties where he was showing parking, are we going to have electrical points combined in that parking arrangement?
I believe the same provisions will apply councillor Well, they'll be deducting provision to allow for future EV connections and pole provision at an appropriate time.
Fine, thank you.
Councillor Hammond? Yep.
Thank you. That end of Beach Coach Station is the normal part where the coaches tend to park. What measures have you done to make the places extra soundproof from the coaches? Because they tend to start quite early in the mornings or come back quite late at night.
Yep, that's a very good point councillor Hammond. There's been an acoustic report prepared and a detailed specification for the glazing and for acoustic attenuation for the facades that are most sensitive to those areas, so the north and the west facades.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, is it councillor Tony Roy, is that correct?
Yeah, just very quickly to follow on from what councillor Hammond has just said. One of the reasons why there was that piece of land from John Wintercourt was because of the cultures that use that particular part of the Beach Coach Station. Now, there aren't so many cultures that use the land at the moment, obviously because of the Covid, but that will probably come back again. One of the other issues was that there were refrigerated lorries that sometimes used that for overnight parking there as well. And I know that they tried to get them to turn that off, but they would use an area away from the residential area. Has that been taken into account as well with this development?
In terms, councillor Wright, in terms of the land used for coaches, yes, that's been considered and I think there were some inefficiencies in the sort of circulation pattern that can be sort of ironed out in the replanning of that area to allow near similar capacity actually for coaches. I don't know the answer in respect to the refrigerated lorries, but for me, that's a management question for the council.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, Christina?
I can't see any other hands, Chair, and there's nothing in the chat bar.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Mr Stammers, for your time and input again, thank you. Yes, so I now call on objector, Mr Mike Cook, to come forward. Mr Cook, are you there, please?
Yes, I'm here.
Hello, Mr Cook, you've got five minutes and I'll give you a reminder when you've got 30 seconds remaining.
No problem. Well, good afternoon, Chairman, councillors. Thanks for the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. I've spoken to and I represent a fair number of local residents who are also objectors, some who you may be or may not be aware of. The grounds we were objecting is, number one, privacy. Obviously, Mr Green said, mentioned about one being a hotel there, but there are a number of private residences. Some of them are directly behind where your north, north eastern building is and that's broadside, right across the back of two private residences. Looking at the, your plans, using a rule of thumb, they look, it looks about eight metres from the boundary, directly overlooking into the gardens. They, the height of them being three stories, that they would have, get vision into the bedrooms, bathrooms and toilets of those existing residences, including some of the guest houses that are there. And obviously, being right bang, eight metres away from the gardens, for people wanting to sit in their garden, they're going to have a three storey building right next to them. And that brings on to the second point I want to say about the light. Now, bearing in mind, these are predominantly to the west, south west of the Wellersley Road residences, then of an evening, like now, I would be bathed in shadow from this dwelling because it would be right in the, in the evening's, evening light would be now behind that building due to the location of it and the height of them. So, for example, my dining room, which would be cast in shadow of an evening and the conservatory, etcetera, etcetera. It was mentioned as well by Mr Green about the bins. Yeah, I've had experiences with communal bins before, then they either overloaded or they're not fully closed. We know because one of the residents has already said his cat brings in the odd rat. So obviously we've got potential rodents coming in to the area because more rodents come into the area and the bins have been placed right on the border against two of the gardens. And again, most winds come in from the west and that's going to blow the smell and any particular loose rubbish into the properties and gardens. I mean, I think this is going to have a, and I've spoken to the people, this is going to have a direct effect on the quality of life for the people in Wellersley Road because these are going to over tower and literally you can, all they're going to see is, or some of them will just see, right at the edge of their garden, and you're talking eight metres away, this 11 metre, well, with a new, with a new design, I haven't seen the height, but the old design was 10.7 metres high, with a higher elevation, that's probably going to gust up to 11 metres. That, you know, that's going to completely overlook and is just going to block out anything from the back of these gardens. Yeah, so also basically the sunlight, the guest house, you know, one of the guest houses has got a garden for the guests, literally that's, all they're going to be doing is sitting there being overlooked by one of these blocks. And, you know, they've said, you know, that they've had a terrible time under Covid as well and now they're starting to get back to business and they've got the thought of it might be detrimental to their businesses of having this development right behind their property. And with the light, as Mr Stammers says, there was a certain distance, well, that north eastern building is within 10 metres of a two storey house and it's south west and it's to the south.
Mr Cook, you have 30 seconds, so if you could summarise, please.
Absolutely, so it's about, to the south west and it's going to literally block out the light and also privacy as well. And I will conclude my participation on that.
Thank you, Mr Cook.
Thank you, thank you, Mr Cook. Any members got any technical questions I just want to ask, Mr Cook?
I can't see any hands raised and there's nothing in the chat bar, Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Mr Cook, for your time and your input today, thank you. I now move to ask any ward councillors if they wish to speak regarding the application, please. No?
No, there's nothing, Chair.
So we move to the committee debate and the decision, it's over to the committee what they think.
I have no hands raised, Chair, and there's nothing in the chat bar.
Councillor Wainwright?
Yes, councillor, councillor Wright.
Oh, sorry, councillor Wainwright, yeah, sorry.
Thanks very much, yeah, I mean, I know this area very well, I was a councillor in the ward for a number of years and certainly when John Wintercourt was promoted some, many years ago, there were obviously people who were concerned about it, but it did actually fill a need and it's been a very, very good development. And whilst I understand that there have been concerns, certainly with regard to some of the issues about the rubbish and having a communal area, I think that that could be sorted out, but I certainly believe that if we're going to be trying to fill the void of this type of accommodation, then I think this sort of area is suitable for it. I do take on board the point that Mr Cook has said, but I think if we'd taken those issues all the way through, I don't think we'd have been building very many properties. And I think we have to accept that sometimes there's going to be winners and losers in these situations and I certainly believe that the development itself is going to be a good development, it's a tidy development, it's one that is actually needed and I would much rather see us build on brownfield site than I would on greenfield site. And I think it is far enough away from other developments to have an impact. It's going to be very, very smart and as far as I'm concerned, Mr Chairman, I'll support this one, but I think we have to take into account some of the issues over noise, I think we have to take on board the issues Mr Cook and other residents have mentioned, certainly with regard to the communal refuse areas, because that is obviously going to be a valid point, but I think on balance, I think because of the necessity to have this type of development, to fill the void that we have with regard to this, then certainly I for one would support this development, but taking on board the points that have been made by residents and try to alleviate some of those particular issues, Chairman.
Yeah, thank you, councillor Wright.
Councillor Wainwright.
Yeah, councillor Wainwright.
Yes, thank you, Mr, yeah, I would concur with councillor Wright on everything he's said really. But, you know, these three sites were identified for development and I think we need to say that it did go through housing communities, I know that's not development control, but it was unanimous cross party for this type of accommodation. It is desperately needed in the borough, as I think Chris said, there's 165 people on our waiting list waiting for one bedroom properties and these are just, a lot of, they're just normal people basically that have outgrown, you know, they've got a two bedroom, they want to downsize because of the bedroom tax. So, you know, quite clearly there is a desperate need for this accommodation and as long as the, you know, some of the concerns of Mr Cook are addressed, such as the noise, the overlooking, with, I don't know, with frosted windows or whatever the officers can recommend, but I would certainly, again, because I say there is a desperate need for this property, certainly one bedroom accommodation, so I would support the officers' recommendations.
Thank you, councillor Wainwright, is that councillor Hammond? Yep.
Thank you, Chair. Very good report, but I still haven't had an answer to my satisfaction on the AOD. We refused somewhere with an AOD level very similar to what this ground site, I believe, is on risk of life at ground floor level and we're now proposing ground floor bedrooms again, somewhere else within the council and this totally smacks of double standards. And I don't think we should be passing anything without confirming it. I don't know whether Dean could answer the AOD level question?
Dean or Chris?
Well, Chris couldn't answer it before, I don't think.
I couldn't answer it before, I think what I'll try and do is look through the technical documentation that's been supplied to us in the context of the local lead flood authority, but equally I would reflect that the speaker from the applicant's design team did actually mention an AOD that was above the levels I think were stated.
Did he say 4.5?
I think we'll need to get him to confirm that back if he's still available.
Is he still, Mr Stammers?
I confirmed it was 4.9, councillor.
Sorry, yeah, yeah, 4.9.
At ground floor level?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Okay, anybody, is it councillor Wainwright?
No, sorry, that's over.
Okay, sorry. Okay, anybody else which you speak?
No, Chairman, there's no other hands and there's nothing in the chat bar at the moment.
Okay then, have we a proposer, please? To move the recommendation?
Yes, I propose.
Councillor Law?
Yes.
Okay, have we a seconder as well then, please?
Our seconder.
And councillor Wainwright is seconding.
Okay, so I'll hand you over to Christine, at this point she will do the roll call.
Right, so I'm doing the roll call, Chairman, for approval of the application as per the officer's recommendation. Councillor Anderson?
Four.
Councillor Bird?
Four.
Councillor Fairhead?
Four.
Councillor Flaxman-Taylor?
Four.
Councillor Freeman?
Four.
Councillor Hammond?
Four.
Councillor Law?
Four.
Councillor Moggford?
Four.
Councillor Myers?
Four.
Councillor Wainwright?
Four.
Councillor Williamson?
Four.
Councillor B. Wright?
Four.
Councillor T. Wright?
Four.
Chairman, that's approved unanimously as per the officer's recommendation.
Okay, thank you, Christina.
Thank you, Chair.
It's okay, we move to open number six, there's no other business been brought to my attention. So at this point, I'd like to wish everybody a happy Easter and a nice break and make the most of the weather tomorrow before you put your thermals back on and if you'd just like to stay seated.
Yes, if you could just stay with me until I confirm that the live stream is.